All of them?
Eight slides.
It's a nice slide.
Your parents is dense.
Yeah.
I don't compare.
So the fighter jets were flying over and the Blue Angels did a show on Saturday. It was cool. Yeah.
Yeah. Not a way to two of the days.
Remember?
It was sunny compared to weather.
It is 10:00 AM. We ask you to please rise and the opening prayer and pledge allegiance before we convene a commissary public meeting. Dear gracious and loving God, we assemble this morning to conduct the business of the county. We take a moment to reflect and pray for your wisdom and guidance over me. May we engage in meaningful discussion that provides a sense of unity in our community. Father, our hearts are heavy this morning. We feel the sting and loss of a bright young life. For the past week, we have seen the love of our valley united. We've seen parents hug their children a little tighter and people reflecting on priorities in life. And this morning, we pray for the Engel family, their friends, and the entire Jersey Shore and extended communities. May you comfort them only as you can. Max's life may have been brief, but his love and passion for life has united thousands in love. Those who were blessed to know him will now carry a part of him always. Those that didn't know him had an opportunity to learn how special his life was for a brief moment. He left everyone an example for us to be a better person. We know that he is in the comfort of your arms for eternity. Lord, this Sunday will remember Gold Star Mothers and Family Day. We remember those who have lost a son or daughter in the service of their country. Comfort those who have lost these precious heroes while protecting our freedoms in service of our country. Lord, we just celebrated the birthday of the U.S. Constitution, and the men and women of the armed services took that psalm oath to honor and defend a document that has survived war after war and stands for our freedoms. They are the ones that had the courage to defend one of the greatest gifts, our freedoms. May we truly understand the responsibility of the true freedoms we have under our care and watch. They are handed down from previous generations at great cost. We see daily thousands that crave this freedom and are risking their lives to enter our great land to taste that freedom. You have blessed us throughout time, and may we be more united during these turbulent times. May our nation never turn their back on you. We truly are a blessed nation. We ask for your hand to be over us daily, and these things we humbly pray in your name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll convene a commissary public meeting this time and ask for approval in the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have public comment on items only at this time? Do we have a line now?
No.
Okay, very good, we'll move on. Kayla?
Presented for your ratification are invoices due through September 27, 2023, to be paid on September 20, 2023, for $3,484,172.77. The breakdown is as follows, with 21.71% being funded by the general fund at $756,446.98. 11.92% is through grants and pass-through funding at $415,321.21. 60.77% is funded by RMS at $2,117,361.79. And 5.60% is funded through escrow at $195,042.79.
Okay. I have motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
So a couple of the big items. One is the Cleveland Brothers.
That's for the landfill.
For the landfill, right, taken from landfill revenue, 1.5 million?
Yeah, not too long ago, maybe within five years, I mean, that same machine was like one, about $10 million in five years.
Yeah, a lot of this is RMS, 1.1.
Yep. Okay. Have a motion, second all, fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So carry.
Also presented for your ratification is the wire transfer payment for $960,000, or I'm sorry, excuse me, $960,715.18 on September 20, 2023, for the purchase of Penn College parcels, and this is 100% funded through the general fund.
Motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
We now have the coroner's building.
Thank you.
And we also want to thank Penn College because they've been great partners to Lake Combe County.
Fantastic.
Meeting our needs.
Yep.
And they stepped right up, helped us out.
They did. And we have the parcel next to expand the transportation. Jason, you're working in the audience this morning. We're excited about that project and moving forward also. So all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. So carry.
All right, moving on to information items. Stephen Beatty, Cedar Cog Joint Rail Authority.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Steve Beatty with the Cedar Cog Joint Rail Authority. I'm the new executive director following Jeff Stover's retirement at the end of last year. And so I just wanted to stop in, introduce myself, and give you a very brief update and certainly willing to answer any questions you may have. So in the box, I left my business cards, a little pamphlet about the JRA, which I think many of you, you know, understand our role here, and then of course, a little cup. So first, and I think importantly, is the fact that we're celebrating our 40th anniversary this year, though Lake Combe County was not an original charter county. You folks joined us in 1996 with the operation of LVRR that occurred. And an interesting fact, and you may know this, is the fact that the LVRR is by far our largest railroad within our network and to the tune of about 10,000 cars last year alone. And that is almost half, a little under half of our full carloads on an annual basis. From a capital improvement point of view, the JRA has in the neighborhood of about $5 million to $5.5 million of improvements over the next 12 months. We have one small project in the county, and that is a $186,000 renovation of two bridges, one out by the Fort Muncie Nursery and another one out on the edge of the county going into Avis. And, excuse me, beyond that, we have a lot of bridge rehabs going on in Northumberland County and Columbia County, and a large signals project that will be starting up in Northumberland County on the Schmoken Valley Line. Privately, we have some customers that have been doing track upgrades on their property. And one of them, which is actually one of our properties, is BulkMatics rail siding extension for $275,000. That was completed earlier this year, and that was funded by the state's RTAP funding. And then also Keystone Filler submitted last month for, in RTAP 23, to update their siding down in Muncie. And as you know, there's two board members that represent Lake Combe County, and they're David Schultz and Scott Harvey. They're very important to the board. They do a great job helping us and representing the JRA on the county's behalf. They, their term ends in 2027, so at the end of this year, there's no action needed related to their appointments. So that's really all I have. There was one last thing, and we did this. So I've been on a county tour, so to speak, since early August to come out and meet everybody and, you know, put a face with a name, so to speak. And at least for me, through talking with new folks and so forth, there's a lot of commissioners and a lot of other entities that don't really know the full extent of the JRA. And you saw in that pamphlet, our little rail network map. So I wanted to present to you folks a rail system map, which also includes our mission to, you know, view and show to others of exactly the extent of our rail system across the nine counties for us, what we're presenting.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
So I'll just leave this.
Yes, that'd be fine. Thank you.
And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, on the dotted lines here, it's more folk, right?
Yes.
So could you literally, if we wanted to do something between our towns and townships, you'd get on a train and go all the way to Tyrone?
Uh, no. Well, unfortunately, because that would require cooperation with Norfolk Southern. We do have baggage rights, but those baggage rights are only for freight.
Only for freight?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I.
Is this something that we could entertain in the future?
NS would not entertain that. That brings on a whole other level of liability, as you can imagine, that NS is just not interested in. And you're not the first person to ask that.
I didn't think so.
But the cool thing, your neighbors in Center County and the BHRS, which is the Belfond Railroad Historical Society, just got their RDC delivered literally right now. It's probably on our Ninty Bald Eagle main line coming up. And you'll start to see, if you're tuned in with over there, more excursions being offered in the Belfond area, which then will be excursions that will be in the Belfond area, but also up to Lock Haven and down to Tyrone. So that's been missing for a while, certainly before COVID. And we do have issues with NS and moving equipment, and certainly Jason understands those issues. So the fact that we now have permanent excursions over there without the need of NS, I think is important.
So, you know, as we travel as commissioners, we get to different counties, we look at all the prosperity and some. And you just wonder, you know, when you have the train ride here for the Christmas.
Sure.
Like packed.
Yes.
Right? When you go down to Jim Thorpe Garden and you see thousands, literally thousands of people getting off that train, the economic development that could take place if we had that openness and forward thinking could bring a lot of prosperity into our communities and rural communities.
Yeah.
And actually tie our rural communities to our metropolitan areas, which would be awesome.
Yeah, I, you know, I share that vision. And simply, if you think about, you know, big events in Williamsport, big events in Lewisburg, Bloomsburg, name your town, to just connect those towns during our large events throughout the year and moving people, you know, via the excursion trains, you know, that would be an amazing thing. I don't see it anytime soon, but you never know, right? Everything is always changing in the world.
So I think it would be helpful, because I bet there are a lot of people in this room who might not have even been born in 1976, but to explain to them how this public-private partnership, how the bankruptcy of the major commercial carrier basically isolated rural America's ability to move goods, had they not, had we not formed this joint partnership. I wasn't around when this was formed, but it's important for the public to understand that basically the major carrier was bankrupt and had all this track. And it was the foresight of people in the community who said, you know what, we're going to form a public-private partnership, we are going to buy up these tracks, and we're going to get, make them available to haul freight. And that is really what's important, especially in terms of manufacturing. We saw it in the gas industry, right? The gas industry was moving in tons and tons of sand, right?
There you go.
The, up in Newbury, that whole siding that was built was to drop sand so that it could be taken by trucks. So I think it's important for us to understand the history because oftentimes we say, well, we'll just put our faith in private business. Well, that's okay, except that you also need to realize that there's some things that private business may not want to do when it's not profitable, but are going to be needed, right?
And highly, you know, risk.
Highly risk, that's right.
So, you know, by joining together and, you know, the municipal authority, Cedar Cog Joint Rail Authority, took a giant risk with a lot of partners, including yourselves.
Right.
So in 1996, you know, Conrail proposed abandonment. Now, at that point, the JRA, you know, was 15 years old or so, and we had a reputation and the ability to the fact that it really wasn't publicly announced that there was going to be an abandonment up here, and they just started negotiating with us. And we've seen that since. You know, our recent acquisition of this, what we call the Seale and Sgrove industrial track, occurred last year, and that was seven miles from Norfolk Southern, which they were going to abandon. And, you know, that's saved a couple businesses down there. And, you know, when I came on as executive director, one of the first things I asked is, well, how many jobs are our customers supporting? And across the system, it's over 14,000, so it's giant. And then to do the math, if roughly, it's 10,800 and change carloads last year, so let's say 10,000. A rail carload is four trucks, so it's 40,000 trucks, and I'm only, the 10,000 is loaded cars. So every loaded car is an empty car. So 80,000 trucks have been kept off the highways in Lake Combe County last year alone. Can you imagine 80,000 trucks running on our highways? And that's exactly, you know, that's the basic benefit. You know, the trickle-down is tremendous.
Yeah. No, it's very important. And I think Commissioner Massera's point is that to be forward-thinking.
Sure.
The JRA should try to figure out how to take the idea that all of us have had about connecting them for non-commercial use and taking the same leap of faith and pushing the county commissioners and everyone else figuring out how we cover the liability issues because it would be a tremendous boon to our rural community to have that level of tourism development. Because now you're not just coming here to visit the Little League, but you're coming here to visit Little League and you're taking an excursion that gets you here and then, just riding a train. You know, we don't ride trains anymore, right? But in many countries in the world, you go to every other country.
Name your country.
You name your country, there's high-speed rail, whether it's Japan or whether it's Europe. And it saves people money because it's incredibly expensive to have cars. I mean, cars are wonderful, right? They're American and apple pie, but they're incredibly expensive. And 80,000 trucks pounding our roads means that it's less money to fix bridges and so anyway, thank you for what you do. Push the board, push, you know, push. If they hadn't pushed, we wouldn't be here.
That's right.
Right? So.
I will do so. Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. Congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, next up, 3.2, John Lovell, offer presentation.
And you don't need to stay for the rest of the meeting. It's going to be a long one.
No, you need to stay and you'll be quizzed.
And thanks for the gift.
All right, so this is American Rescue Plan progress update. This is going to kind of be dense, so I kind of apologize for that, but hopefully I'll keep it short. So just kind of quickly going through the timeline of the American Rescue Plan, you know, when we got the funds and the circumstances that kind of led us on our path. So we received funds for the American Rescue Plan, which is $22 million in total in May of 2021 and May of 2022, in two injections. We, on the bottom of that list of things, we also knew that the funds must be expanded by June 30, as our self-imposed deadline in 2026. So kind of working backwards from there, we decided we couldn't wait for the federal final rule to come out through the Treasury. So we started conducting an outreach effort between November 2021 and February 2022. Finally received that final rule in April of 2022, and then kind of took off to the races from there. The other important date is June 30, 2024. All funds need to be obligated by then. That means basically we need to have a project scope for every dollar that we've received by 2024, and then again, expanded by 2026. So that's kind of the outline of how we have to conduct ourselves in this process. So with our outreach efforts, again, that was late 2021, we started that. We had an online pre-application process. We received about 119 applications and over $54 million in project requests. A lot of community need out there. And also internally, in county government, we received $24 million worth of requests, improvements, capital purchasing, things like that, technology upgrades. And in that process, you know, the commissioners also conducted some listening sessions to various groups throughout the county, including municipalities, our housing sector, municipal authorities, which are here with us today, nonprofits, and first responders. We did a public, general public listening session, an early childhood education session, and then an agricultural community session as well. And that kind of helped formulate an idea of, I think, what the commissioners wanted to prioritize and kind of come up with a rough budget or an idea of how we wanted to budget the funds. So the commissioners came up with eight categories, and again, this is before we even got the final rules. It's an amazing process when you get the money before you get the rules. So, and then the rules end up being, I don't know, a four-inch binder, something like that. So it was a difficult process, but we tried to anticipate things. You know, we had kind of an outline of what we allowed to do, things like that. So we came up with categories, including, you know, priority county investments, agriculture, public safety, economic development, public works, recreation, education, and other, just like a catch-all category. But then we got the final rule from the Treasury. So basically, there's five main things that we're allowed to fund. You know, we're allowed to support public health response, address negative economic impacts, replace public sector and private sector revenue loss, premium pay for essential workers, and then sewer water and broadband infrastructure were also allowable expenditures. And then we were kind of given the ability to award grants to municipalities, authorities, 501(c)(3) nonprofits specifically, and then privately owned businesses. And that kind of all helped us come up with a way in which to actually budget the money once we had all of those. We hired Cedar Cog to help scope and manage our grants on the, under certain items, so workforce development, public works, education, revenue loss, recreation, public health response, and broadband development. We have Cedar Cog engaged to help scope and monitor those grants as we award them. And then internally, the county has a revenue loss category, which is the technical name for it, but basically it's projects that the county, we were able to do a, basically a $10 million, what do you call it?
Administrative.
Administrative standard deduction from the total grant award. And that money, I believe I'm skipping ahead here. I guess I did. So the $10 million basically is money that we're allowed to kind of broaden the scope on. We can use it on general government services. It's less stringent than the tracking for the, what we call the $12 million side of the budget. And we're trying to use it for certain county priorities like public safety, county projects, the levy and recertification, construction, economic development, and then also support to the agricultural community. The challenges came when trying to fit eligibility and expectation together. It sounds like you have $22 million and there's not many strings attached. That was not the case. Plenty of strings attached, including the procurement process. Plenty of strings attached, including the procurement process. So trying to, to get certain entities up to speed on, on bidding procedures, hiring an engineer, teaching prevailing wages, all those things, that, that may have killed some conversations just, just at the scoping phase. It's, it's, it's an awful big hill to climb if you're not used to it. Certain tax filing statuses precluded other organizations from getting grant funds. Again, the timeframes, we have until 2026 to spend this money, so we have to keep that in mind. Then construction projects themselves are, are limited to a certain area called the disproportionately impacted area, which I'll, I'll show a map of that here in the next slide. And then there was a constant need to create our own small grant programs, which is rather complicated. It's not something that we're set up to do on, on a, on a general typical basis, but we did the best we could. And then the commissioners' goals were to assist those who were impacted by the pandemic, attempt to positively impact as many Lico County residents as possible, maximize utilization of these funds, and then invest in legacy projects like broadband, sewer and water, and levy. In the spin-off efforts, these mini-grant programs, we, we did a volunteer fire department grant. Basically, we, we awarded $20,000 in Act 13 funds to 28 volunteer fire companies throughout the county to help offset their, the impacts from COVID. They, they couldn't do their typical fundraising activities during that time and, and, and lost quite a bit of revenue. So that was our attempt to kind of help bring, make them whole or as whole as possible. And then we also started a Housing Starts Initiative, which is a grant program to help defray costs of required improvements through the land development process. So that's your sewer and water connections, your, your road improvements, curbing, things like that, to help stimulate or spur growth in, in market rate housing. Obviously, housing was a big topic, is a big topic as we, we progressed through the And that, that grant's up to $500,000 for eligible expenses, and it was available in 2022 and currently in 2023, and be up to the commissioners if, if it's a program that they'd like to continue to fund. So. So here's our, our progress to date. I'll kind of break it down by line item. Education, we have $1.1 million budgeted there. We're currently working to scope two projects with early education providers. The big hurdle here is kind of aligning the, the scope of work with the ARPA grant reporting regulations and trying to make that all work in a cohesive manner. But hopefully, we'll be making some announcements there shortly. In public health response, we're working with three entities. We have a million-dollar budget there. And basically, those projects will be to improve indoor air quality, or at least improve the infrastructure to allow them to improve their quality. And all those projects, we'll kind of announce more specific details as, as they come in front of the commissioners for consideration of, of funding. Revenue loss, we, we budgeted $750,000 there. This is a grant program where for-profit, nonprofit entities can apply to the county. We reviewed their, I believe it's the gross receipts, to see if, if they had a loss during the 2019 to 2020 timeframe, and if they were able to recover or not in 2021. So we were able to fund 11 nonprofits and, and 16 for-profit entities. Moving on to workforce development, we have at this point a budget of $200,000. And we've shoehorned Habitat for Humanity into this. It kind of became a hybrid category. Really interesting project we have with them is a partnership with Penn College, where they'll work with Penn College students to help build a house right next to campus and get hands-on experience as they go through that process. There's another pending award in South Williamsport that'll bring four more units in, into the And then here's that disproportionately impacted area map. So throughout the whole county, everything outlined in red on, on the left is the disproportionately impacted area. That's primarily a portion, smaller portion of the city. We have $900,000 budgeted here, and what we've decided to do with that money is, is to help fund the cost share for future grants for the expansion of, of the Susquehanna River Walk project. So our, which aligns perfectly in that, in that zone. So that's what we've elected to, to do. Broadband deployment, we've funded a project with River Valley Internet in the amount of $300,000 for expansion of, of fiber to the Huntersville area. There are other grant programs at the state which is, which have kind of taken priorities with a lot of the broadband providers, understandably. They're much higher amounts of, of money, but they have a lot more hoops to go through there. So what we've decided to do is go after a broadband engineering and deployment plan grant through the Appalachian Regional Commission. And we should actually hear if we get funding through that in the amount of $50,000 next month. So that, that award should be announced. And we'll use $50,000 of ARPA funds to help match that. And what that plan will do is, is kind of verify service areas, say where our gaps are. Because right now, it's, it's a mystery to, to most people, you know, what are, what, at what level does the, the service provide in a certain area? Where are, where are the communities that need to be serviced? How much will it cost to get the, the fiber there? Things like that. So once, once we have that plan done, that'll be open and, and shared with any ISP that, that would be interested in, in developing more of our broadband network. And then public works. So our initial budget for public works was, was $5 million out of, out of the $12 million grant side. We've since revised that to increase it to $7.15 million. And after today, we'll have awarded 21 projects. These are all sewer and water projects throughout the county. All those dots kind of represent a place that a project's been given so far. And it's kind of hard to see here, but the county population is, is represented in, in orange dots, and you can kind of see, we're trying to represent is, is how many, the proportion of the county's population that's located in those areas. So on the county revenue loss side, oh, this is the site I was looking for. We have that standard deduction of, of $10 million. We're still expected, expected to spend that money by 2026. And again, it's to broaden the, the types of, of projects we can do. What we've, what have we done with it so far? We've utilized it for that five-year loan for, for the mall, mall process, the mall purchase. We've invested in public safety, so we're, we're looking to modernize radio equipment. And actually, there's going to be another possible grant program that we have to create there. Updated aerials for county GIS, which will be used in, in various departments for analysis. And then agricultural investments, like at the Conservation District, we're, we're working on designing a pavilion to, to help with outdoor training exercises, and then we'll also be looking for additional ag sector support projects. And in the future, you know, we, we have a, a line item for the levy, which, which we're looking to expand when we get into, to construction. Countywide housing study, we will use this as a cost share for that. Public safety enhancements, and then, and county, general county services and investments. And then if you go to lico.org backslash ARPA, we're working on it now, but basically, we'll have a hub site that'll show where we've been, what we're doing, and, and where the money's kind of being programmed as, as we move forward. So you can kind of check there for, for progress updates.
Thank you, John. I'd like, I'd like to make a few comments. You know, it's funny, we can argue whether, you know, ARPA, the American Rescue Plan, was absolutely needed or not. But as you can see with the people that are in this room today, there were a lot of needs. What did you say, 78? Total needs?
Seventy-seven.
$78 million. And, you know, I'll, I'll make light of this, but when we're sitting, the three commissioners are sitting in the conference room and we're deciding, how do we, how do we spend this money and what categories should we list? And Scott was saying, well, we, we, we need to make generational differences. It's very important that this money is placed in places where it'll make differences over the next 30, 40, 50 years. And Rick, of course, was a guy with, we need early learning. There's so many challenges within the early learning systems. And I'm sitting here going, hey, let's just spend the 22 million if we gotta, we gotta get it spent. We only have a certain amount of time to do so. And it would help us win reelection. No, we weren't running. But that's not the point. So, you know, we, as a county government and the leaders of the county, you know, came up with the ideas of what categories should we start. Everyone in this room helped us make those decisions, trust me. But it's the leadership within the county that makes it work, and the partners that made this work. You take a look at this, this isn't just put together in five minutes, right? There's a lot of work through CEDOCOG, through STEP, through HOPE, through our planning department, our GIS. It's, it's really complicated. To get to where we were at today, it, it's been a challenge. But county government makes it happen. You know, and I, I'm, I'm saying this for one reason. Sometimes our state-elected officials do not have the faith in, in county and municipalities. Oh, we can't give them the money. They'll misuse it. Well, let me tell you who misuses the money more than any, anyone. And I'm not. You already know. When you take a look at what our planning department and, and our teams and partners put together, and the time, you know, from sewer and water projects to the housing, we had a lot of people in this, this meeting room right here to make this happen. It's you and it's them that made it happen. And I, I want to, you know, applaud you, John, and, and the whole planning staff, and, you know, all Maya. You, you've, you've done a fantastic job. And, you know, we still haven't spent that much money yet, so.
So I want to go back to when we first were advised we were going to be receiving ARPA monies, and we found out we're going to get $22 million. And you think, wow, $22 million is a lot of money. But when you started seeing requests come in, you know, $54 million from the, the public and then $24 million for stuff with inside, inside the county, you had up to $78 million. Where do you start making decisions to, to say no to a lot of people? So we discussed this and, and we developed a plan. And it was a team effort. It was, everybody that was Tony mentioned, Commissioner Messer mentioned, was, was involved in that. And it was a lot of meetings, you know, this, the city, the municipalities, three nights of meetings in this room with municipalities. And then the water and sewer, we had, many of you were at those meetings. The developers, the realtors, the, the agricultural community, the early education people, we all brought everybody in this room because we wanted them to be part of the decision-making process and making sure we spent these monies responsibly. And so we developed a plan. A budget is a working document. So whenever you do the budget, you have to make adjustments. And we've done that with this. We've seen the need for the water and sewer communities. Without these, without these monies, I hate to see what municipalities' water and sewer bills would be in the future. Now, most of them have had to do an increase, which no one wants to pay increases. But those increases would have been substantially more without these monies. And so we're, we're thankful that we have these monies to be able to vote on to support the community and the different projects, the, the different things we were able to do extra, you know, the housing initiative program, helping the firefighters, you know, the volunteer firefighters, you know, who's more dedicated in their communities than those, those individuals? They got crushed during COVID. They couldn't do their fundraisers. And to be able to provide them some monies so that they can survive, and they're the heart of the community that they live in. So we were able to do a lot of different projects. We were able to assist people. Again, every decision we make, I think if you go down through this list, you'll see it's a generational impact. It's going to be something that's going to last for generations. And that was the biggest thing that I wanted to see happen from, from the youth to the, to the seniors in our community. I think we're assisting everybody, doing it countywide. As you see the map, you see different things, the western part of the county, the eastern part of the county. And so we continue to plug away at it, and we're excited to make some announcements today and vote on those, those different projects.
You know, the, I hope that.
Oh, Commissioner, I wanted to add one thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry. When we went to CCAP, this is, Director and I went down to CCAP in March of 2022, and we sat in a room with the other commissioners and we started discussing ARPA projects. A lot of the counties had even begun to develop a plan. And as we shared ours, they were like, wow, you guys are ahead of the curve. And then in January of this year, Senator Casey came to visit the three commissioners, and his specific visit was, what are the counties doing with the ARPA monies? And he praised Lico County, and he says, you guys need to market this. You guys need to tell the state how you're spending your monies because this is the way it should be spent. And he commended us on that.
Okay. Even when we were at, at CCAP most recently, the, some of the counties still had. And, and it really is, as my colleagues have said, it's an education process back and forth. I mean, you know, we were going down one path with the chamber about trying to get businesses here by giving them some financial incentives, and, and Brent Fish was at a chamber meeting and said, what we really need to do is, is housing. And it's that back, and that's just one example. I only raise it because it's an example of constituents getting engaged in government. Obviously, the people who here work for the water and sewer authorities are engaged. It's their, it's their mission, right? And, but it's, the people from early learning, STEP has done an extensive study, and it's really important people to understand, we have not lost, we've not lost our way on the early learning. We are going to do something. We've committed $1.1 million because I've been hearing rumblings in the community that commissioners haven't done anything about early learning. The money's committed, we're doing it, we're trying to find the pathway, the path forward. But STEP and, and the folks who did a whole assessment for us, so it's two ways. What I hope constituents will also learn from this is, put aside whether it's Republican or Democrat, rural America needs capital investment. That's the bottom line. Without capital investment, we disappear. In fact, I said this to someone the other day. I was in, I was up in New York in the urban area, and I said, both parties, in my view, have basically abandoned rural America. I mean, the population decline doesn't have to happen, but we need capital investment. The, this is capital investment, $22 million. What we don't have is, we don't have the ability to attract an Amazon who comes in and puts $25 billion of private capital backed by banks into a community. So we need, regardless of which party it comes from, we need capital investment. And capital investment includes investment in our workforce, in our early learning, in workforce development, in bridges, in water sewer, in all of the items. I'm incredibly proud, I looked at that, I was incredibly proud of the staff and the people in the community, as well as the three of us frankly, for what we've been able to do with a small amount of money in terms of leveraging it and in terms of really, as Commissioner Metzger said, making investments that are going to be generational. We have worked really hard, listening to you all, to the public, and trying, and the staff has listened, and the staff has responded. Shannon in Planning, Maya, John, CEDOCOG. What an asset it is to have CEDOCOG, Kristin McLaughlin and, and the folks from CEDOCOG because they are a resource for all 11 counties to utilize. So we don't have to be out hiring. Every county doesn't have to go out and hire, we have a resource there. So I hope constituents will begin to look at the future of how do we attract capital investment. investment. There are people in the community who invest their money, right? We do that to try to make it. But to really move our county ahead, we need to attract more. We've done the best we could do, I think, with it. Some people will be critical of things, decisions we've made. That's okay. No one is always gonna see things. But I hope people will begin to see the glass as half-full and that, you know, I started thinking about all the companies that are coming here and the housing going up. And I thought, you know what? I sort of feel like we're turning a corner and we might be on a road upward. But we're gonna have to work together and we can't get ourselves sidetracked. We do have all different political views on things. But fundamentally, we can't get sidetracked. We have to keep our eyes on that vision of building this community, getting people to come here. This is a tremendous first step and, and I think you guys have done a great job. You really have. You've done the public well and that's something that you can feel good about. You know, I was at a workforce development meeting yesterday and this is workforce development month. And the staff, the workforce development board is, is, covers like nine counties, there are fifty people at the meeting, we meet once a quarter. There's twelve thousand jobs, I think, available in the nine-county region, ten thousand people out of work. And those are the only people who have actually continued to look for a job. There are people who have given up looking for jobs. I might have the numbers flip-flopped, it might be ten. The bottom line is there's a whole lot of jobs. But it was workforce development and, and Director had asked the staff to put why they like working for advanced PA. And they said, I get to influence people's lives and help change their lives for the better. And that's what all of the staff have done with this. That's what the public has done with the feedback you've given us. So I think, I think it's something exciting for us. It really is something we can be proud of. It's, it's not, it's a lot of money and yet it's not a lot of money. As you said, we had seventy-four million-
Seventy-eight million total.
Seventy-eight million dollars worth of need. So, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I think what's important is this is a massive undertaking as far as planning goes and, and the coordination, as you mentioned, with all of the different stakeholders involved. And this is done on top of all of the regular business that we do.
That's right.
And it's not like we've increased our staff to be able to do this. We're doing this on top of everything.
And what it represents also is decades of experience. I mean, Shannon, who is not our new director anymore, she's been here four years, had how many years at Berks County?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. John's been with us for-
About fifteen.
Fifteen. Maya's been with us twenty. Kristen, how long have you been doing this?
Eleven.
Eleven years. I mean, you're talking about decades and decades. And then look in the audience, it's people here from water and sewer authorities who have been here, many of them ten, fifteen years, who have know how to solve the problem. So I, I really feel like we have incredible potential. That's a good point, Matt.
We not only just did this with the ARPA, we did this with the CARES money. You know, we helped the schools, we helped three hundred and fifty businesses, we helped forty-three nonprofits with that ten point three million. And there was other counties in the state that just took their, their CARES money and utilized it only on their own projects. They didn't talk to the community, they didn't help the community, they helped their own needs. And we were, we were, we were one of the counties that said, no, we're not doing that. We're gonna take care of the county, or take care of the people's needs first.
Right. We put, in the school districts, we put out immediately-
Three point one million.
Three point one million so that we could make sure kids had laptops. We literally went through and figured out how many kids we needed, how much they needed to get laptops.
Two hundred bucks a kid.
Right. Two hundred bucks a kid and we divided it up. Listen, we don't say this to pat ourselves on the back, that's our job. That's what you expect from us. But I do say this, at some point when all the federal and state money runs out and commissioners say, you know what, we may need to raise taxes for capital investment. And I'm not saying this because anyone here has a plan for that. Just like we asked the five-dollar fee from people and we were able to leverage and fix all those bridges, at some point we might say, community, listen, if we collect an extra ten or fifteen or twenty bucks from everybody, we can continue capital improvements, we continue investing capital, whether it's in our water sewer or wherever. We better get going, somebody's folks are getting tired of hearing us talk.
Okay, thank you, John, for the update. And thank you to everyone who's involved in this massive project.
All right, moving on to personnel actions. I'll be taking these for a round. In adult probation, in addition to our hiring of an adult probation officer, Ethan Newton, APO one, full-time replacement, twenty-one eighty-one an hour, eighty hours pay period, start date sixteen October twenty twenty-three. In domestic violations, Bonnie Gee, clerk three, full-time replacement, fifteen seventy-four per hour, seventy-five hour per pay period, start date sixteen October.
Dan, motion?
I'll move to approve, a second.
All right, so I, I, I carry. This time we will convene the adjourn the commissioner's meeting, recess, I'm sorry, recess commissioner's meeting and we'll convene board of assessments provisions at this time.
Good morning, Commissioners. I usually call in. I thought I'd come over and see y'all.
Well, thank you.
I'm seeking your approval on this list of exemption requests. I'm just gonna read down through them, explain what they are for and everything. The first one is Faith Westland Church at seven seventy-three Dockedys Run Road. The reason for exemption is a church, but this is a name change only because they put a D through and they just changed the name without church. The next two are for River Valley Church at four seventy Pine Street and fifteen thirty-six Catherine Street. One is the church and the other one is used for events, youth group and meeting places. And there is a name change only, so there's no loss in taxes on these ones. They were already exempt. The next one is Elder Township at thirty-six Grange Drive for community events. And then Elder Township again for Grange Drive. This is used as a vault field. This is also exempt before, so there's no loss in taxes. It was owned by Elder Grange and Elder Township purchased both parcels. The next one is Muncie Borough at one hundred Manic mechanic street. This is a FEMA buyout. Muncie Borough at one nineteen North Washington Street, also a FEMA buyout. Lewis Oak Township at twenty ninety-seven Metal Lane, a FEMA buyout. Lewis Oak Township, twenty ninety-five Metal Lane, FEMA buyout. Lewis Oak Township, Metal Lane, FEMA buyout. Old Lightcoming Township, one oh eight Cottage Avenue is a FEMA buyout. The next one is Family Promise at three twenty Park Avenue. This is being used for the homeless shelter. Williamsport Assembly of God at eleven thirty Sherwin Street, the parking lot is for a church. Williamsport Assembly of God at twelve thirty Sherwin Street. Part of the church addition is on the parcel that the parsonage sits on, so really my request is only to grant them a partial exemption only. Any questions?
They are in loss taxes, they're just county taxes.
Yes, that is correct.
Which is the smallest amount of taxes to contribute?
And that's a total loss, three thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and ninety-eight cents?
That's in county taxes only.
In county taxes.
Yes.
Okay. Got a motion?
I'll move to approve, a second.
All right, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you, Commissioners.
At this time, we'll adjourn the board of assessments revision for the review commissioner's public need this time. Action.
We're gonna move up the ARPA awards to the, the first action item, so John.
And that would be action number six.
Six.
Logan. So we did a, a first round, initial round of, of ARPA grant awards to, to the sewer water authorities that apply, where everybody got funded up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So in the first round, we awarded three million, seventy thousand, four hundred dollars in, in ARPA awards. We, again, from the presentation, we had five million dollars, so it totaled, so we had one point nine million left over in, in that category. And our thought was to do a second round where we invited those who did not get fully funded in the first round to apply for additional ARPA funds. So we, we invited eight, eight authorities to apply. And, and today we will, we will be, I'll be suggesting that we award six grant applications. One point nine million, one point nine million dollars doesn't go very far, especially when you're talking about public water and sewer infrastructure. So we, we looked at all the other categories, all the other line items that we had and, and decided that we should move some of that money around and, and try to really get a good award out of the second round. So that we were able to increase that total second round to, to over four million dollars. So I don't know if you want me to read off?
Yes, please.
May I have, maybe you'd be part of that?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So with, going down the list here, Hughesville Water Authority, it's a, a water meter project. It's, the suggested award amount is three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars. Jersey Shore Joint Water Authority for the Larry's Creek Filter Plant Replacement Project is one million dollars. Lightcoming County Water and Sewer, who manages multiple different plants and systems around the county, has two grants here. First one is for the Riverside Area Stormwater Improvement Project and that's in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars. And their second grant is for the limestone systems improvement, water systems improvement project in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. Montoursville Borough has a Finnish water reservoir project that they're working on. We've decided to suggest an award of five hundred thousand. West Branch has a Muncie Trunk Line Project in the amount of five hundred thousand. And the Williamsport Municipal Water and Sewer Authority has the Brook Street Pressure Reducing Valve Project. And, and that award is in the amount of six hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars. And as part of this project or process for the second round, we invited all these entities to, obviously most of them are here, to apply. We had a, a, a grant application that they had to, to complete and submit. We reviewed it and then we invited them all in to hear their story and kind of interview them about the grant, or about the, the projects that they're proposing. And I guess part of increasing the, the, the funding here was, I mean, they, they all kind of sold us on those projects and, and that's all I have.
Okay. Would any municipality like to speak? Yes. Jenny, come up to the podium, please, and announce your name and where you're from.
Good morning. My name's Jenny Gardner, I'm from Montoursville Borough. And on behalf of the elected officials of Montoursville Borough, I want to issue a thank you to the commissioners for awarding this grant to us. It will benefit the Montoursville Borough Water Works tremendously. So once again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Mike? Do you want your colleagues to join in?
Maybe you can tell us about the projects too, the education-
That's what I was intending to do.
Great.
Yes, thank you. I'm Mike Miller. Sorry, I hope you're all here very well. This is Laura Templeton and Katie DeSilva, who serve on the board of the Williamsport Municipal Water Authority. And it was the water authority that applied for a grant for a pressure-reducing valve. So what we are doing is we have our main plant out in Mesquita Valley. So if you go over into DuBoystown, take a left at the landmark that everybody knows, which is the Valley Inn, and you head out into the country, we have our plant there that can produce up to twelve million gallons of water a day. We're currently selling five and a half. There is a giant pipe that comes from that and it crosses the river and that services our whole system. Our whole system covers fifty-one thousand people, so very nearly half the county. And the board was very diligent in working with the staff to select a project that will benefit almost everyone in the county because Williamsport clearly serves as the economic hub. So this is gonna put in a pressure-reducing valve. So what is a pressure-reducing valve? It simply allows us to adjust pressures so you don't get blowouts on lines because our water comes from in the mountains, it's fed by gravity. And this allows us to make sure that we don't get odd pressures in the pipe, make sure that you don't have showers leaking or pipes leaking or problems in your home. So that's what we are doing with that. We continue to run an aggressive capital project plan with the authorities, so we take care of our problems and this will be a big help. So on behalf of the boards, we thank you guys for the contribution. And I'll turn it over to them if they have.
Yeah, thank you.
I also, on behalf of the board, want to thank you. I'm Katie DeSilva. Before I retired, I did with Clinton County Commissioners, everything, then Shannon and John with the CARES and the ARPA. And it's tough. And congratulations, you had huge amount of money and I think you've done a great job distributing it and making it go to work. So, and we're grateful on behalf of the board for this particular award. And I don't believe that's the full project cost, is it?
It is.
It is. Okay. Great.
Great, thank you. Okay, anybody else? Yes, Eric?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
You got a big organization to run there and you got a lot of volunteers who help, so we appreciate that.
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Eric Johnston with Jersey Shore Water Authority. This is Ken Beerly, the chairman of the authority. On behalf of the authority, thank you for the contribution. We've had several meetings with the guys and you helped us to the fire. You made us do our homework and come back again and it made us better and opened our eyes up as well. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
ARPA project details a full replacement water treatment plant in our COVID station area. We're currently a nineteen fourteen water treatment plant. It's pretty much all still original. We still use the wood infiltration system. The current project that the award amount is suggested for today is for about twelve million dollars. A full automated system and it will increase our production by one million gallons a day. And that will help us grow in communities that do not have water also. Like everybody says, generational was a key word here. We had a water treatment plant from nineteen fourteen, about a hundred and eight years now. And we're hoping this one lasts just as long if not longer. And we thank you for that and the community, we thank you for the help too. That will help us ensure to keep, try to keep the rates down in the future.
Let me think about this, you're living in a community, beautiful community, that has a water system that's a hundred and eight years old. And if there's a fire in town, your water pressure in your hospital goes down. That's scary.
That's exactly what happens to us. And the school.
And the school. And the school, yeah.
And then it's a tough decision to make between fighting a fire, hospital, the schools. So it's not fun times every time, but we did the best decision for the community and hopefully with this new plant, we won't have to face that dilemma in the future. We're looking to begin construction right around the twenty twenty-five year mark.
And you've done a great job of trying, you know, West did an expansion there and to do that expansion, they need more water, we need, right? So if we expect to have, we expect to have employers and companies expand, we need to make sure we have the infrastructure.
You have a beautiful facility in Bollesburgs.
Right, yes.
You have more, more businesses that want to come into Jersey Shore area, but they need to have the water usage.
Yeah, we've been contacted twice already this year about businesses looking to come in and grow in certain areas where we don't have water. So this one shows us to possibly get business to come into the area and attract folks to come into the area as well. We've met with West twice on their project and are fully working together on that, so.
It's important for the public to understand that when you look at these allocations, we took into account a lot of factors. I mean, for example, here it's so glaring, the age nineteen fourteen. And, and we also looked at the rates people pay and we looked at the median income for communities to try to make sure that we balanced and took into account a lot of different factors.
And with your suggestion, we did have to raise our raise twice. That wasn't a fun time, but it had to be done. And by doing that, I certainly hope it's where we are today with the grant award and that's grateful on behalf of everybody from the authority.
I'd like to chirp in on that too and for making us do our homework. I mean, I personally learned a lot. You know, I've been in business in town for years, but never on the authority side, you know? So I've learned a lot through this whole process as well, so. well. So, thank you for making us do our homework well, so.
You know, just a comment on raising rates. The public has to understand, all of us, myself included, that we have to put aside money for future capital improvements. For a long time, water sewer rates were so low that they didn't reflect the true cost of replacing the capital structures once they deteriorated. And before you know it, 25 years goes by, and you have pumps that are failing and so forth.
Yeah, and also with this new treatment plant, it'll give our staff more work-life balance. Right now, we're staffed seven days a week, 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. So, we're all home enjoying Christmases. We have three guys on first shift, second shift, and third shift, who is not home with their family. So, dedication of the points has gone a long way. So, our contribution back with an automated treatment plant will allow that to happen, where they can get their weekends and their holidays off to be with their family, and that's what we're looking for also.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, sometimes it's not easy to be a commissioner, and other days, it's like, wow, this is nice. But, you know, the organizations such as the Sewer and Water Treatment Plants, and other organizations, whether they're nonprofit or for profit, you are what make our communities work, okay? Government can help, and sometimes get in the way, but sometimes we do come up with good plans, and, you know, you have to be able to sustain yourself, because we can't be here forever, you know? So, I think you've done a great job, and we appreciate. I'm sure you took a lot of heat, but you've done a fantastic job.
Eric can just say, yes, it's really.
The heat isn't over yet. We're still, we're working to it.
I think we do need to do buzzwords, though. I think our 10-year project is more than generational.
Multi-generational.
Thank you for the education. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Happy you're out. I guess, it's like, we need five and a half generations.
Again, if I'm not mistaken, you were the one that was talking about the generation, multi-generational needs.
Yes.
Don't spend your money wisely, is what I was saying.
Is it centurion needs, or whatever? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Morning, commissioners. I'm Olivia Lopatovsky with the Lycoming County Water and Sewer Authority. Christine Wagle, our executive director, was here earlier. She had a leave for commitment. But on behalf of the authority and our board, we want to thank you for the award of both the projects. First is the Limestone Water System Improvements Project. That's actually serving our State Route 44, State Route 44 and the Limestone Township System. So, that's a very aged system that we own. It dates back to the 1930s in some sections. So, it's very aged. That pipe that we currently plan to replace is two inches, we believe. We don't even know the material size, so that very much is needed to upsize that pipe to six inches. It's around 5,500 linear feet. And then we're going to be replacing customer services as well as part of that project. So, thank you for that. And then the Riverside Drive Area Stormwater Improvements Project is going to be addressing some longstanding stormwater runoff issues at the borough boundaries of South Williamsport and DuBoystown. So, it's a joint project where the boroughs have an MOU, they're cost-sharing engineering right now. So, the 600,000 for construction is greatly appreciated. We can get started with that. It's rerouting some stormwater runoff off the Riverside Drive with some improved piping, upsizing some piping, and then just catching it better to prevent icing over in the wintertime, and then runoff issues in the summer surging. So, again, thank you.
Thank you. Yes? Morning, gentlemen.
I'm Don Young, Hughesville Water Authority Chairman. Johnny Whitaker, our vice chairman. Just like, on behalf of the Water Authority in Hughesville, thank you guys for the grant, for the meter replacement project. We've, I shared with John, some of the, one of the other grants that we've gotten was SRBC for astera satellite imaging of our system. And the two passes, we had 29 points of interest for possible leaks. And was it last week? We had the boots on the ground for a week. He narrowed it down to 14 confirmed leaks. So, we fixed, not just August alone, I think we were over 20 leaks, or for the year, rather, I'm sorry, for the year, 20 leaks fixed. So, we were estimating probably 20% for our water loss on the meters. So, between that and the one-shot deal with the leak detection, repairing those leaks, we'll be able to get our unaccounted-for loss down and recoup a lot of lost revenue.
Good.
So, we were literally giving water away at that rate, so.
Plus, it was, just from an environmental perspective, it was terrible, right? To lose 20% of clean drinking water.
Oh, yeah. And like I said at our meeting, our previous engineer just looked at it as well, it's going back into the water supply, but we're treating that water twice then, so, you know, you can't sustain that. It's just, it's not sensible. So.
Thank you.
You did a great job, and we appreciate you all being here.
Yeah. Anybody else? Yes?
Hi, I'm John Lynch. I am the executive director of the West Branch Regional Authority. We just, from West Branch, would like to thank you for the grant. This trunk line that we are fixing, it carries 85% of Muncie Borough and Muncie Creek Township. Last February, we had 20-foot section collapse on us. Had about 900,000 gallons of sewer go across the field. Took us 48 hours to fix it, setting up pumps to bypass it, and then in March, another 10-foot section collapsed. So, I talked to my board. I said, we got to get this fixed. We found out that we're going to have to put a forest main in, because it's flat. And what we're going to do is put the forest main in, we got to put a lift station in, and a board, and this $500,000 is going to help out a lot for us. And I want to thank you guys very much.
John, how long have you been in your position?
I've been the executive director since February. I've been a deputy director for three years. I've worked for West Branch, been at First Form, so I've been with them 11 years. But this type of business, I've been doing for 27 years.
But thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. This time, last for a motion.
I'll move to approve the items read by Mr. Leval.
About a second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
All right, we move back to 6.1.
You folks are welcome to leave if you like, and get back to your duties and communities and thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, guys. Ladies.
6.1.
Clear the room. Anybody left?
Well, when we're not giving away money, nobody wants to see us.
You give away some money, and they all leave.
Oh, well, it's like going to a family reunion, right? When you're dividing up the will, everybody.
Everybody else, wake up.
Jason, come on up.
Sorry.
Morning, Jason.
Commissioners, seeking approval. And to provide FanVest 22, Lycoming Mall LLC and Lycoming Mall Revitalization Tax Exemption under Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistant Act, LERTA.
Yeah, Jason.
We refer to it as LERTA. Yeah, exactly. Thank you all for the opportunity to present this to you. This is actually, you are one of three taxing bodies that will need to review and approve this. I can share with you that the Muncie Area School District has reviewed it already and has approved it, and you're the next one to be reviewing it for consideration. Next month, we will be taking it to the Muncie Township for their review and of the, of the LERTA request. What they're, one of the things I can share with you, that was also shared with the school district, is that FanVest will not be coming in to request a lower rate based off of their acquisition and valuation of the property. That was one of the things that they were very clear on, is the fact that they will not be coming in for reassessment, valuation of the property. So, from that aspect of it, what they're just asking for is some assistance right now, because it is a large project, it's a large investment, and trying to bring in new stores and other developments there. They will be ultimately the ones who are responsible for those developments from that end of it. If they put up a, you know, a store, they're going to be the ones who actually are going to undertake that. And so, this will not just benefit the FanVest, that end of it, it will benefit them being able to bring in developer, development opportunities here. So, from that aspect of it, that's what you're being requested to consider at this point.
Now, this is a 10-year LERTA?
This is a 10-year LERTA, correct.
It starts immediately, once it's approved?
Once it's approved, correct.
And then, and then, so explain the tiers, the schedule.
Okay, so, the schedules would be the first six years, it's abated 100% of any of the new assessed value. And I think one of the key things that people need to understand is, LERTA is not Keystone Opportunity Zone. The existing property taxes will continue to be paid. So, there is no abatement of the current tax. It would be only on the assessed value of the improvements to the property. So, that first six years would be that. Then you would start a sliding scale of 20% of remaining four years of the property, 80, 60, 40, and then 20. So.
And it's not a rolling, it's not a rolling LERTA. It has a start point and an end point, right?
Well, as was voted on by Muncie School District, there was no sunset window on this. So, from that aspect of it, that would be up to the other taxing bodies to determine if there's going to be that. For example, you know, with the one over in Jersey Shore that you've approved previously, along with the one with Williamsport that has been done years in past, there's been a window of that time, so.
I'm just, an example, if a company wants to move into the, that designated area 10 years from now, then they would get 10 years from that point?
Correct.
Yeah, and honestly, I would like to entertain a motion about putting some sunset on it, because.
I'm not going to argue with you on it.
Yeah, it could be 20 years from now.
That's why I'm bringing it up.
Yeah, that's why I raised it.
It's here for an incentive to create that economic development now.
Now, exactly.
And if they, if they wait, it's unfortunate for them. So.
Well, they may not have even realized that they didn't.
Well, I didn't realize it either, until just now.
So, okay. And by the way, I don't, I don't think that's at all being unfair to the developer. I think it's just giving some sense of.
I think.
Well, it's the same with what you've done with other LERTAs.
Yeah, what we've done with other LERTAs, and it's.
Motion with the ears on, do you want to?
Well, I think we need.
Yeah, I mean, I would make a motion that we add, that we add to this a sunset provision, meaning that it goes from 10 years from the date that we sign it.
I'm wary of doing that, because I don't know, I just haven't heard the arguments on either side. So, I would rather just.
What's your deadline on trying to get this done?
We can bring this back, actually, the LERTA for the city of Williamsport, we could do at the same time, if you would want to consider that for the next meeting, if you want to table it.
Yeah, I'll move to table it, and then also, maybe we can talk to the folks in Muncie and find out what their thinking was, or if they.
For the school district?
Yeah.
I can get ahold of the superintendent, I know Craig there or so, and ask him about it, and then follow up with you all.
Is the motion table?
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, it's table at this point. Put on, get your agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jason.
So, we're tabling pending.
Further discussion.
Sunset discussion. All right, 6.2. Commissioners, seeking your approval on Resolution 2023-20, to print closing documents, actually, requesting your approval on the ratification of this resolution that permitted me to close, sign the closing documents on the, related to the transaction and agreement of sale for the following parcels, 359 West Third Street, Williamsport, Lycoming County, Pennsylvania, known as Lycoming County Tax Parcel Number 70-015-203, 3341 Wahoo Drive, Williamsport, Lycoming County, Pennsylvania, known as Lycoming County Tax Parcel Number 67-026-400E. And when this actually does come about, the vacant land located on Prince Station Road, Brady Township, Lycoming County, Pennsylvania, known as Lycoming County Tax Parcel Numbers 04-431-101ALPA, and 04-431-405.
Okay, motion.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Any further comments? Hearing them? All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
All right, 6.3 through 6.8. Maya?
Good morning.
Morning, Maya.
The first item I have for you, 6.3, is vote to approve the list of agreements approved by the Director of Administration for the month of August, and there were 15 agreements.
Okay, motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Any questions?
Mostly professional services?
Yes.
Yes, they're mostly renewals.
Yep.
This is the Spanish interpreter.
For courts.
Maybe different courts, yes.
Yep.
All fair side?
Aye. Aye.
See, maybe they didn't finish the Rosetta Stone, and we don't even confirm ours.
I'm going to bow.
The next item I have for you, 6.4, is vote to approve RACP grant agreement with the Commonwealth Office of Budget. This is for the Emergency Department Expansion Project at Muncie Valley Hospital. That is in the amount of $5 million is what they received, but the total project cost itself was $10,672,314. And as you know, with RACP, I've been dealing with Muncie, this Muncie project for the past six years. The way it works with RACP is you do all the project upfront, and then you finally get the grant agreement. It's opposite of the normal, you know, grant process.
And we're the pass-through entity.
This is completely pass-through. There's no cost to the county, other than we're just the applicant.
UPMC, right?
Yeah.
All right. And we want to thank you and your staff for your due diligence, working on this for as long as we have. It's a lot of work.
Yeah, Maya is one of our unsung heroes. She's behind the scenes quite a bit. Public side.
How many contracts do you have right now that you're dealing with on a yearly basis?
Oh, on a yearly basis, I see at least 2,000, at least, that I review. Right now, I have in the system, and it just comes in spurts, depending on what we've got. And I have 50 in the system right now that I just haven't even touched right now. I have to get to. Yep.
Only 50?
Only 50.
Motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
The next item I have for you is vote to approve change order with air management technologies. It's in the amount of $400,000 as it relates to our HVAC upgrade.
In Third Street Lot?
Yes, in Third Street Lot.
This was the, okay, this was the original contract. Right, we talked about this.
Yep.
Yeah.
And motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
The next item I have for you is vote to approve the fiscal year 2022 and 2027 Supervision Funds Agreement. This has helped to offset the salaries and fringe benefit costs and the APO office. And again, we never really know what we're going to get, because we've talked about this several times. The state doesn't give us our full allocation.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
You know, this is a fee that someone who's on supervision pays $40 a month to be You know, this is a fee that someone who's on supervision pays $40 a month to be supervised, and, and I believe that fee either started out at 25 or $30. I think it's only been increased maybe once.
Since I've been here, it's been once?
Once, and I know that other courts have increased the fees over the years. There are some counties that charge up to $100 a month for supervision fees. We've had discussions with the court about increasing the fees. We understand the court's resistance in increasing the fees because we have a large amount of costs and fines that are uncollected, and they feel it would just continue to add to delinquency of that account. However, taxpayers pay a large portion of those costs, and personally, I'd like to see the fee increased once in 20 years. I feel hasn't been sufficient. Whether it's a $5 increase or a $10 increase, I feel that it will reduce some of the cost on the taxpayers. So we ask the court to please reconsider going forward into not this year's budget, next year's budget, and helping reduce some of those costs on our taxpayers. Motion, a second, all fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item I have for you, 6.7, vote to approve state and local cybersecurity grant application to Department of Community and Economic Development. This is actually a grant I found just coming across a couple of weeks ago that I met with Leslie and her team in IT, and it was a last-minute ditch, and we went ahead and submitted, and so we're hopeful that we will get some funds, this will help offset our Albert security system, which helps with cyber attacks. And I guess we'll just see where we go with it, but I'm hopeful when that we will get the funding.
That's great. So there's not a specific amount you're asking?
No, basically, they just, you know, with the single assistance application and this side of things, because it's geared towards local, all you have for the budget side of things, you just put in a dollar they tell you to do. I think what they do is they look from the totality of, you know, applicants, the company, you know, sensors, you have Albert sensors, and they probably divvy up those funds based off of a formula is what I'm thinking.
Okay.
So.
What did you call them, Albert sensors?
Albert sensors, yeah. They're, it's everything's tied to our network. It helps with cybersecurity threats. It gives us notifications that there's an attack.
Named after Albert. A-L-B-E-R-T?
Yeah.
It's a, the system that is, was recommended, and it's one of the best practices through our C cap on affiliation.
Right.
We'll try to get a system named after you before you leave.
Well, it's a sensor, actually.
Couple of classes.
Voice room is almost empty now.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
And the last item I have for you is vote to approve the COVID-19 mitigation for county jails, grand application, that's to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, and that's in the amount of $111,529. So this is the non-competitive grant application that came out for PCCD specifically for mitigation as it applied to jails. This was a more of a difficult actual allocation. This is one that they gave to us, it's based off of a predetermined formula, this was exactly what we, we got. So I basically just did a budget based off of, you know, supplies. We did a lot of supplies in there, and we bought, you know, some of it, I included those electrostatic sprayers that we use, disinfectant wipes. We did things for Zoom meetings, so we can conduct more Zoom meetings. So I tried to hit all areas and worked, you know, both with Chris Ebner and Brad to formulate the budget on that, and hopeful being that it is an actual direct allocation that, assuming there's no problems with the application, that we will be approved the full amount.
So as we see our, our over $100 billion budget, and we see the taxpayers paying about 40% of that, the extra 60% comes from the grants and projects that you initiate or other department heads initiate.
Yeah.
And this is a perfect example of one. So we want to thank you and your staff for doing this.
Thank you.
Motion?
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
All right, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Maya, have a good day.
You too.
Up to 6.10.
Beth, are you on the line?
She is now on the line. Do you want me to call her?
Let me tickle this.
Do you need me to pitch it, or you go to the back?
Give me two seconds. I'm not gonna.
Okay.
You want to text her and see if she's available?
No, one second.
Can you move ahead, Jason?
All right, Commissioners, seeking your approval on the amendment to the agreement with Dokia of America Corporation in the amount of $24,500. This is a budgeted item. This appears to be a software upgrade for 9.11.
Okay, you could state this was a 2023 budget item.
Correct.
Change request.
Change request, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
We're going from the IP NPLS software upgrade. It's currently 6.1, but they want to upgrade it to the 9.0, so that's what we want.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning, Director.
Good morning. Commissioners, the first item is the purchase of a Carlson landfill GPS unit for our new catapult compactor from Carlson Software, the amount of $46,400. As you voted this morning, our new compactor is delivered, that is the first actual compactor served in eight years, not five. We got, so it's, we've gotten eight years out of it, but it was 1.3, and now they're 1.5. But they, we didn't order the GPS unit for it, it's a separate entity, we wait till we got the machine in, so this is the purchase now for the $46,400, and this is budgeted item.
Incredible how expensive these things are. That's one.
That's without the GPS?
Yeah, it was 1.3, it's like, the GPS unit is $46,000.
Yeah, and one, in 2015, December 15, when I became director, we took the delivery of what we call Compactor 15, and now we just took delivery of Compactor 16. Yeah, so it's going on eight years, but the GPS system is vital. It shows us our grades, our slopes, and compaction.
Oh, yeah, no, there's no question, and it, and it makes us more efficient.
Yes, so we're not driving around the same ways too much.
Makes us money.
Technology takes a lot of money. Yeah, and we did not, we did not use an old unit. Normally, we would trade in a compactor and take the unit off of it, but the GPS we would have taken off, the old Compactor 14, would be 10 years old, and there was no sense in trading in the machine, what the value was. It's worth more to us to keep it on site, run it once in a while. We're going to have two working faces here fairly soon when we open up Field 12, so it's vital we keep this extra machine. So we did not trade in Compactor 14.
Okay.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Thank you. Commissioners, 6.12, this is a change order with March Technology. This is a no change in price or anything, it's just, they've had some significant delays in delivery of the equipment. March's is the company that's doing our SCADA system, software upgrades, so we are able to monitor all our pumps and control systems throughout the landfill and around the pump houses and for our force mains. The March's technology is asking for 130-day extension, and I recommend we grant it because there's no price increase, it just moves it out to December 31st.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
So carry.
Commissioner, 6.13, is a professional service screen with Penn Core Consulting. Penn Core is a local engineering service in this, in Williamsport area, who will help us do our land work, our, digging our samples, core samples and stuff in the new BOP land. As you know, we have to gather five good years of data on rainfall, wetlands, soil, depth of soil in the area before we can start trying to permit landfill sales. So this company will help us get the process started now that we are owners of the old camp area.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Jason.
All right, 6.14, lastly, but not least, Ken, agreeing with McClure.
Morning, Ken.
Morning, Commissioners, morning, Matt. This is an agreement with McClure Company to give us a proposal for fixing or coming up a solution for sanitary issues in a basement at a courthouse.
Which is critical.
Yes, it is.
Especially moving part of the sheriff's downstairs.
Correct.
So this is engineering, this is design, this is contractor, you know, involvement with the contractor, because they, more than likely will be.
For years, when we have very heavy rains or short thunderbursts, water backs up into the basement, we sit below the elevation of the pipe, right?
Correct, yeah.
Not water. I was going to say water and sewer.
Yeah, our line going out to the sewer line is, I think it's roughly a foot above the main sewer outside. We're so low that when the mixed sewer in the stormwater gets flooded, it pushes back into our building.
And APO had a storage room down here for years, and, and I used to go down to try to keep the water from going into our storage room, and you've had to clean it up. It is not pleasant, smell is atrocious. The city thought they had it fixed at one time, with the valve they put in, and.
Unfortunately, it's not holding 100%.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's not working 100% now, so we take the next step and get this corrected once and for all.
Correct.
Motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So carry.
Commissioner, comment?
I've got just a couple.
Yep.
And I want to bring awareness to a challenge we're all going to be facing in the future, and it could be very near future, and that's the PFOS, okay? Just read an article on a lawsuit. They manufactured first responders' uniforms, whether it be helmets, clothing, it's going to be a healthy lawsuit. And what they're finding is that this plastic that they use is carcinogenic, and you saw it in spikes in first responders. Why am I concerned about this? Because it's going to affect landfills. It's also going to affect probably our sewer and water treatment plants because they produce solid waste that they ship to our landfills. That waste also produces a lot of revenue for us in gas, right? But the EPA is, is going to possibly deem that as hazardous material. And if they do deem it as hazardous material, then there are many consequences because of that. I know in my organization, if we have, if we're working with hazardous materials, their pay goes up tenfold. That's a lot of money. And, and this is going to affect every person's pocketbook, whether you're rich or whether you're poor. We need to keep our eye on this, we need to, I'm not saying fight it, okay, because there's some studies out there, but we have to be reasonable, or this will be an expenses is much, much, much higher than the Chesapeake Bay cost, and the Chesapeake Bay cost is still escalating. As far as appeals, I believe Commissioner Maravida will be sitting on the Board of Appeals for his first time because somebody had to drop out. But what he's going to see is probably Muncie School District taking people's homes to appeal because their assessed value is here, and their purchase price is here, and they believe that if they take them to appeal, then they're going to collect more money. They've done it in the past, and they'll continue to do it in the future, and not, I don't think, I'm not sure if any other school district is doing this yet, but they have the right to do so, okay? So what does that do to, just in the borough of Muncie, for example, or Muncie School District, Scott and I could live in the same home, I mean, the same style of home on that block. And I'm living in my home, I'm not selling it, but Scott, Scott bought the home next to me, which is the same, and its assessed value was $80,000, and he paid $200,000 for it now.
Because he bought it recently.
Because he bought it recently. With that difference, the school districts are going to look at. They're going to take it to appeal, they can take it to appeal, which they have, and Scott's taxes go up. And yet, I'm living in the same home, and my taxes stay the same. This is where we're at in Lycoming County in more than many ways, okay? We, we're getting to the point of we're below 50% now, I believe, somewhere around 48%, which is, is telling us we should be, you know, doing a reassessment, because it will not be fair, it will not be balanced, and, and school districts will have to make choices. So just another example, and you're, you'll see it when you sit on that board of the inequities of our, our system, our current system.
Anything else?
That's it.
Commissioner? Okay, I don't have anything, public comment? We haven't any in front for the audience? We did not this week. Okay. My line?
Yes, let's see. Aluminum tarmac, hi. Thomas Christie, hello, Lycoming County, hello, chat. Aluminum tarmac, I love Lycoming County, represent. Thomas Christie, Legacy Projects, Thomas Christie, $20,000, question mark? Aluminum tarmac, man, that voluntary fire department grant was an awesome, awesome initiative. Aluminum tarmac, housing starts initiative, yay. Thomas Christie, hi, aluminum, thanks for the comment. Unfortunately, that voluntary department has cost Lycoming big dollar, sign dollars, sign dollars, look it up, total waste. Aluminum tarmac, any cost which builds social development is a cost well spent in my eyes. Pull your head in, Thomas. All right, and then these are all from Thomas Hattens. I think the County Commissioners Association should speak out against Josh Shapiro's hatred for the state and federal constitutions, his disdain for law and order, and his love for power by appeasing his puppet masters of tyranny, by acting as an obedient lord of his ruling masters within his fiefdom to honor his king and firm up his position in the kingdom. His decision to cancel the contract with real alternatives goes against the general welfare of all the people in Pennsylvania. This damages women, children, and families, thereby hurting everyone in our state. Also, his order to automatically register people to vote when applying for a driver's license is unconstitutional and needs to be challenged. I think we should call for a grand jury investigation to challenge his aberrance or abhorrence for the federal and state constitutions. I think most people don't realize how our constitutional republic is supposed to operate. We are not a fiefdom to be controlled by the whims and fancies of a lord. We are not a fiefdom to be controlled by the whims and fancies of a lord. To appease and impress and prove his loyalty to a king and his kingdom, a lot of blood has been shed to live in the light of liberty. I think when people don't know who gave them their rights, they become compliant to the entity that claims or gives the impression of the grainer of their rights. When society forgets and turns their backs to him, we are witnessing increasing fruits from the seeds that have been sown and are being sown. Also, I'm very concerned for the child, childcare situation in our area. Is there any way we can form an outreach to aid in this situation by using mostly interested retirees to keep costs low? I realize this may be a pipe train and many details to be addressed, but I do tend to think outside the box. Thank you, Thomas Adams, Williamsport.
Okay, Ian?
Last one.
Yes.
And this is from Thomas Adams, in the comment regarding where our rights come from. When a society forgets and turns their backs to him, should read God, was the correction.
Okay.
Same.
Okay, we've completed our agenda, and we'll be back here on Thursday, September twenty-eighth, at ten AM, thank you. Thank you, John. Can you send this, uh?
The PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We got a question?
They're all on.
Oh, they're all on.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
I'm good.
Thanks, boys, appreciate it.